Special meeting and city council order for Tuesday, November 10. We have roll call, please.
Yes. Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Weinstein?
Here.
And Reverend?
Here. So we don't follow the same formalities that we do in a regular meeting, so there is no public communication, though. If somebody had a pressing urge for a public communication, I'd be welcome to do that. Any item not on the posted agenda, seeing none, then we just started.
I hope so. I'm not yet late.
No, you're...
Borderline.
Borderline.
Thank you.
Very good. No later than I usually do. So the first item on our agenda is the update on the Main Street corridor enhancement planning process and hopefully an approval of a proposal, an RFP proposal to bring on some advisors here. Adrian, you want me to turn this over to Allison, or do you want to...
I'll say a couple of words. So Allison Purnell from Local Government Commission is here tonight to give a brief update on where we're at in the planning process for the Main Street corridor enhancement project. This was a grant that we were awarded, Sustainable Transportation, Sustainable Communities Transportation Planning Grant, last spring, earlier this year. And the process is officially underway. We've had several meetings, and Allison is here to give an update on that. And then we're requesting approval of the draft request for proposals. It is slated to go out Friday, so that we can get the design team onboard to help us with this process. So without further ado, Allison?
Thanks for coming down tonight, Allison.
A whopping 22 miles from Lakeville. You're welcome. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and members of the community as well. So as Adrian mentioned, I'm Allison Purnell. I'm a project manager with the Local Government Commission. Local Government Commission is a nonprofit organization that's been around for about 35 years. We're based in Sacramento, but I really have the best of both worlds. I get to work for LGC, have been with them for 15 years, and I get to live and work from my home office in Mendocino County. So there's nothing better for me than to do projects on the North Coast and communities that I care about, and this is one of those projects. So this is just very exciting for me. LGC and also NCO assisted the City of Willets in applying for these funds from Caltrans, and we were very tickled when it was awarded. What this project is going to allow the community to do is to undertake a participatory planning process, to come up with a plan for Main Street. We'll be looking at the three miles bounded by the city limits, so that's going to be Main Street South and Main Street North, if you will. And of course, Main Street North is the portion that will be relinquished to the city as Main Street once the bypass opens. So the plan is going to include concepts for physical changes to the street scape that include sidewalks, traffic calming, green streets concepts, which has to do with hydraulics and stormwater maintenance, landscaping, bike lanes, bike parking, parking configurations, gateway treatments, and can even get down to things like street furniture and where trash receptacles and benches should go. So really, it's, you know, the future of Main Street here. On Wednesday, November 4th, just last Wednesday, we received the notice to proceed from Caltrans. Adrian and I had our fingers crossed that it was going to come through because we had this kickoff meeting planned for the following day, and it came through at like 4:55 the night before we were to have the meeting. So we were tickled, because that meant we could actually start, because we've been waiting for months and months and months to start this project. So we kicked off the meeting with Caltrans, and we had our advisory group join us. So there's, we've got at least, we've got four people back here in the advisory group. There's about a dozen of us. It includes city staff, it includes Caltrans staff and staff from other agencies, as well as representatives from the Chamber and the Main Street Merchants Group, so we're trying to just get a representative cross-section of the stakeholders involved. We were also joined, this is noteworthy, we were joined by Mauricio Serrano, who is the project manager for not only the entire bypass project, but also for the plans that are being developed by Caltrans for Main Street. And he brought along his engineer from District 3 out of Marysville, who's in charge of coming up with the plans for Main Street. That was significant, because of course, we're going to be coming up with plans for Main Street. And so it was an incredible opportunity for us to talk about the two projects, merge the two timelines, and figuring out how we can work together to incorporate more of these Main Street-type concepts into the plan that they have a very early draft of. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later, and I might let staff handle questions on that. The advisory group is going to meet monthly throughout the life of the project. The purpose of it is to share technical information, to help interface with Caltrans and other agencies, to coordinate with those relinquishment plans for Main Street, like I just mentioned, and also to assist in developing a community outreach strategy for our participatory planning workshops, which are going to happen in spring of 2016, this upcoming spring. So I wanted to talk about that planning process and about what we can expect to get from that. It is going to be a highly participatory process. Public input is going to wind up being the cornerstone of the plan. This is really a bottom-up plan. This is not a top-down planning effort. And at the same time, we need to take into account the very real constraints of Main Street, and the very real constraints associated with the relinquishment plans for Main Street. So we're trying to take a visionary approach, but also merge that with reality. So as I mentioned, this spring, there's going to be what we call a design charrette. And charrette is a French word for a little cart that everybody puts their ideas into. And so in this case, the charrette is going to actually be a design studio that we'll set up in Willets and have everybody functioning out of for a whole week. And everybody's ideas are going to go in, and then out of that little cart, the little charrette, at the end of the week, will come some conceptual plans for Main Street. So what are we going to do those whole five days? Well, we're going to hold an opening community workshop, as well as a closing workshop, which usually happens on a Friday, where we actually roll out the designs that have been developed in that five-day time period. We often engage the community in walking assessments, where we'll go out and walk portions of Main Street, instead of just looking at maps and like trying to remember what it's like out there. We actually go out there and look and see what's happening. We hold focus group meetings with stakeholders to understand the issues in greater detail, and so that it's not just your typical workshop where people say, "Oh, another workshop. I'm not going to go." We often surround it with festivities and food that are really representative of the Willets community. And we'll be looking to the advisory group to advise us on just exactly what that is going to look like. My favorite part of the charrette event is going to be the half-day street fair that we conduct. And that half-day street fair is an opportunity to do full-scale mockups of some of the design recommendations for Main Street. It is unlikely that we're going to be able to do that on 101, but we can, because of encroachment permits and additional engineering requirements that would be necessary for that. But what we can do is we can move it onto a side street and actually, in real time and real space, mark out lane widths, mark out parking configurations. We can bring out landscape treatments and really look at what we might want to have Main Street look like. And then use that as an opportunity to invite the public to come out to the street fair and give their input during the street fair. So it's just a highly interactive way of getting input that's very different from your standard workshop format. So all of those things, plus agency vetting of the concepts, are going to happen in those five days. We'll have our design consultants onboard. These are going to be design and transportation planning and engineering consultants, yet to be hired, and they'll be working onsite to make all this happen. So this is what a charrette is. It's crazy. All this stuff gets thrown into the cart, and then at the end of the five days, we actually have something to show for it, and it's a really engaging and fun process. Let's talk about the timeline, because I know everybody's curious about when this is going to happen and how quickly can we make it happen. We've had a delayed start just due to contracting requirements at Caltrans headquarters, but we've basically accelerated this timeline as much as possible, and we've really hit the ground running. Tonight, of course, we're hoping for council approval of the request for proposals. And what this RFP is, is it's going to go out and be distributed to a wide range of design and engineering consultants who do this type of work. They'll have 30 days to prepare a proposal in response to it and to respond, so that by mid-December, the city should be receiving all of those proposals, and then it'll go through a review process by a selection committee, such that by early January, with council approval at that first council meeting on January 13th, hopefully we'll be in a position to select the consultant and then have them onboard. First thing we're going to do is get those consultants together with the high-level folks at Caltrans and talk reality, talk this project and their project and how to merge those. And then we're going to be working on an outreach plan, because we really want a lot of community participation during the charrette events, and it takes a couple of months to come up with the plan, to do the outreach and the plan, and to prepare for it, because there's many logistics involved. And I'm going to be working closely with our advisory group on that. The charrette is going to occur sometime in April or May. Very soon, we're going to start looking at dates and make sure that those dates are not in conflict with other community events. And then by May, by early to mid-May, we should have some preliminary concepts. And that's significant, because September 1st is one of the critical deadlines, one of the critical dates that the relinquishment team shared with our advisory group. If we do not have concepts submitted to the senior engineers that are working on the plans for Main Street by September 1st, 2016, we're kind of out of luck. And so what we're really shooting for is those preliminary concepts by May, and that those can be further refined, working with Caltrans and working with other agencies, such that by May, June, July, August, the draft plan is really coalescing, and then it's going to be ready for a 30-day public circulation. So that public review draft should be complete sometime around September, and the final plan will be complete by the end of 2016. So we'll be wrapping things up just over a year from now and handing over a plan to this council for adoption. With that, I think what I'd like to do is turn it over to Adrian and possibly to Rod to talk about any more of the details about, you know, how to coordinate with Caltrans or to handle any questions that you might have as well.
Thank you. Rod, do you have anything that you wanted to add to the...
And we talked about coordinating with Caltrans, and we've been trying to do that since February, since we found out, or actually it was before that, when we found out who the design engineer was. So we've had some conversations over the past six or eight months, and basically what we've been saying is, you know, we have this planning project coming up, and we're going to have some concept plans. So I stress that concept plans and engineering plans are, they're not interchangeable. So that's still the message until we actually have something to discuss with them. So I guess that's going to happen sometime in the summer. My concern is, and my concern will be until we have our concepts and the plans that we're, not that we're not going to make it, but it's going to be tight. So timing is an issue, I think. So my recollection was September 1st, they were going to have plans and estimate completed, so, and plans and specs by December. So...
So how can our plans, if they don't get them until...
Well, we need to have the concept plans that come out of...
That may be...
The April-May thing. We need to have that in front of them and have these discussions ongoing and sit down and figure out what, you know, what we can and can't do, how we're going to fund it, what our portion.
Right.
I hear the half-cent sales tax is thrown around by everybody, and I would just, you know, that's a specific use, that was intended for a specific use. I don't think it would pay for decorative street lamps or sidewalk furniture, so we need to keep that in mind. So that's the other caveat.
Go ahead.
So yeah, I think the RFP looks great. My question is all about timeline and how it's all going to work out. So we don't have our finalized plan until after Caltrans needs our information. So how does that work in terms of, you know, are we getting them sort of the plans that there's some agreement on the things that we want? Are we getting those things to them before the 30-day public circulation of the draft? Or...
I would think so. We're talking concepts. Concepts are not, I mean, these aren't designs. So a concept is just, say, we want a curb extension at Wood Street, you know, we want all four corners, we want a raised intersection. We want, and Caltrans would essentially be designing that into their plans. So from the engineering side, and I bring up West Commercial Street, where you go through the process and you design a project, and then late in the game, you're asked to change it. And so that's a lot of rework, and it's something we would probably, I don't think we want to go at Caltrans with asking them to rework a bunch of their design. So I don't have a good idea exactly how long they're going to take to put their plans together, but if it's something they're working on currently, right now, the latest is utility locations, and they're asking us to verify utilities, and they have some preliminary design on the, on some drawings, preliminary engineering drawings, that show most, almost all of the sidewalk curbing gutter being replaced. There's just a few sections that are remaining.
Rod, they, I mean, this grant is for all three miles of Main Street.
Right.
Is there, I mean, we've talked before about, would it help to accelerate and focus on the relinquished piece of Main Street and bifurcate this process, or is that any improvement in time? I mean, right now is a proposal for them to develop all three miles of street scape, I guess, right?
Right. That's the planning project, and that's something that, you know, we can't lose sight of that.
Well, I understand that, but if we're, I mean, are we comfortable that we are working within a timeline, given these, you had Mauricio, an engineer there last week or whatever. Are they saying, "Yeah, we can work with you as long as we stay with, stay in these dates that are given," or...
Yeah, they seem willing to work with us. They've seemed that way since the beginning.
Yeah, I've heard that too, but we keep kind of kicking back our projected date when we're going to get them.
Right. Because we had anticipated this starting July 1st, you know, this planning project starting on July 1st, so starting later in November, obviously.
I mean, they're a little dialed in in that it's their grant, you know?
Well, yeah. It's their grant, but it's also, so then it's also their project. So their relinquishment project's funded separately, you know, and then Sherwood Road's funded by a different fund, and then I think the sidewalk in front of the high school's a third, you know, their third project that they're calling the relinquishment. Sherwood Road is supposed to, they're supposed to have plans July 1st, 2016 for Sherwood Road, and they set it...
Construction plan.
Yeah, well, they go plans and estimate, and then they have their PSNE, their plan specification and estimate, like three months later. So once you get to that three months later, December 1st, if they've gotten to that point and we're not in there, then they specifically said you don't have a chance. But it sounded to me like they were potentially going to do Sherwood Road, the Sherwood Road intersection first, as its separate project. And basically, if it's ready to go and they have the money, it's going to go.
But they're still not going to do that until they open up 101 bypass. That's what I've been told.
Right. So we just, yeah, we just have to, we just have to get, we just have to get in there with them and get them, get them the information they need to do the design, because, you know, nobody wants to redesign and...
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, it's going to be really... Larry?
I have several questions. First of all, when is the public going to be able to put their input in? Was the date something that the newspaper is going to publicize so that the people will be able to come to a meeting or whatever it's going to be? The next thing is, since we have a lot of absentee owners in the buildings and things that are on at least the first part of the, from, you know, from the city limits north all the way down to Highway 20, are they going to be included or notified that, you know, this is going to happen and, you know, do you need any input into that or whatever? And then the next thing is that when they do that, the Caltrans does the putting in the new sidewalk and widening the street or whatever they're going to do, they're just going to do it up to their encroachment area? I mean, I mean, there's a lot of buildings on Main Street that their encroachment goes right up to the, right up to the building. And so if they're going to tear out the sidewalks and stuff, we need to know, the people that are in the business, we need to know that, you know, they're going to be, it's going to be, you know, no pavement or anything in front of their building for three weeks or a month or two weeks or whatever it takes. But communication is going to be very, very vital on this when they start doing it. And my next thing is that when everything is done, I don't want somebody to say, "Well, gee, I didn't have an opportunity to give my input." And so I really want that publicized, so that when we're sitting up here in front and somebody say, "Well, gee, I didn't know about this," that, you know, it was publicized plenty and they just weren't paying attention or whatever. I mean, the communications with the people, I think, are very important items. And I know that's not all in your bailiwick, but I'm just saying that these are things that have to happen.
Right. So my understanding, that would be part of the design charrette, and the outreach would go on prior to that. It's going to be on the radio, it'll be on Facebook, it'll be, I mean, I don't know if there's going to be a door-to-door outreach to property owners or mailings, et cetera, et cetera. I would defer to Allison on that one. But the Caltrans folks, they did address the impact to business owners on Main Street during construction, and their basic premise was they're going to do everything they can to make it so that people can access businesses. And, you know, one of the concerns was December, the December month, having construction during December, and that being the busiest time for a lot of local merchants. And number one, not likely to be a lot of street construction happening in December. Number two, they would try to coordinate if there was work to be done in December. Maybe that work would be done starting at Highway 20, working this way with fewer commercial businesses, more spread out, so it would have less of an impact. They seem very committed to that communication that you're referring to and making sure that everybody knew. As far as getting everybody involved, it sounds to me like if somebody doesn't know that there's a design charrette happening or that this project is ongoing for the next, well, starting in January for basically six, eight, 12 months, by the time the final, you know, the final document is produced, I don't know, they must not listen to the radio or read Facebook or check it. It would be very difficult, I think, for somebody to argue that they didn't receive notice.
And what about the members that are on this committee? Can we go to them and say, you know, "These are our ideas," like Linda and Pete? I mean, can we go to them and say, you know, "What are you going to do in front of our place?" or whatever? Because I'm telling you, I'm going to be out there with a gun if anybody starts working on our place in front of our place in December, because that's going to be the same way. I mean, you just can't do it in December, because that's our biggest month.
Right.
Do it in April 1st to the 31st. Nobody buys anything except pays their taxes that way. Adrian had a comment, and then I...
Just a few comments. December is typically not, you know, it's outside of the construction season, so as Rod said, highly unlikely. And there will be a very comprehensive outreach plan. It will be not only online, social media, but radio, print, I mean, every way you can imagine for there to be outreach, it will be comprehensive. And it's my understanding that the Caltrans folks, the people involved with the relinquishment project are willing and planning to be here for the entire charrette process, so to be engaged in that. So they are getting those ideas as they're being flushed out. So we really have every reason to feel optimistic that they're going to be fully onboard and engaged in this process.
You know, if it's within the budget of the project, I would think that, you know, a certified mailing to each one of the property owners on Main Street within the project area would address what Larry's talking about. I think more than just, I'm sure it's several hundred people, but I think that that would, you know, for the absentee landowners, you know, those things going to where those tax bills go, that would address that in a very affirmative way, that they couldn't, they could not say that they haven't been notified, and it's a little bit of money, but...
Sure.
Every once in a while, we have to do certified notifications from the city, and I don't think that would be a particularly hard thing to come up with. That'd be my suggestion in that.
I do have another question, but I also want to add that we, as council members, can do a lot to, and the people that we communicate with, I mean, it's our project too, so we can make sure that we're telling people that we interact with, "Hey, you know, I know there's been some planning things in the past, but this is it. This is the time to get onboard, because we're going to be defining our Main Street, you know, for years to come." One of my other questions was, though, about the part of the RFP is financial estimates, which I think is really good. You know, these are some of the ideas the community says that you want, and this is maybe how much some of those things would cost. That information is going to come in after the plans and specs are in for Caltrans, right? So how do we, as a council, try to think about how much money we're going to have to put into the pot as far as, to get the sorts of features that we want, be it half-cent sales tax money or other funds, if we're not getting the estimates until afterwards?
I would assume they could come up with some estimates earlier on than that.
Before the final, certainly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some false estimates, just based on their experience.
Rod?
Square footage of sidewalk and how many feet of curve.
Yeah.
Can I address that too?
Sure.
Address it from here?
You bet. Well, actually, it'd be best if you came up to the microphone so the TV audience could get a full...
Believe it or not, we have a TV audience.
That's great.
Yeah, we do, generally.
Rod did a great job of answering a lot of the questions that actually fall into my purview, so I'm impressed. Let me go back just a step and to talk about the outreach. I think a mailing to Main Street property owners shouldn't be a problem. We could look at any additional cost that would be related to a certified mailing, but that shouldn't be a problem at all. And bear in mind that we're looking just at the right-of-way. So we're not looking at any improvements to private property. So we're talking about what's currently state right-of-way and will soon become the ownership of the city of Willets, which isn't to say that property owners won't care about what goes on in front of, of course they do. It impacts many things about business. So there's, in talking with Mauricio and his team, they have accepted the invitation to join us for the duration of the charrette. And what's significant about that is they will get to hear the ideas that the community has and that the engineers and the planners come up with as soon as they're rolling out, and they'll be able to... and that the engineers and the planners come up with as soon as they're rolling out. And they'll be able to say, mm, not feasible, or nope, we've already decided that that turning radius at that intersection has to be this in order to accommodate the trucks. So we'll be able to modify designs immediately on the spot with their presence there. So that's very significant. There's not going to be anything in the designs that are a surprise to them because they're attending the charrette. We're going to give them additional opportunities as well to review the early drafts, the administrative draft that's going to go out, you know, a couple of months following the charrette. So I just want you to know that they're going to, they're going to be there from the ground level seeing what's happening. Now, they have told us that they will be able to seriously look at incorporating any design changes that come out of this process on the relinquished portion of Main Street, the northern portion of Main Street, so long as it doesn't add to their cost. Their cost is fixed, their timeline is fixed. But let's say we come up with a traffic calming mechanism like a bulb out at certain intersections. And they actually find that that's not going to add any cost to their project. They told us that they would consider including that in the initial construction that would happen. So that's really a best case scenario, is immediate incorporation into their engineered plans and into construction that's supposed to happen in 17, 18. There's a second way that the plans that come out of this planning process can be incorporated. And that's if there is additional cost, but another funding source can be identified, such as the city's half-sent sales tax, such as money coming through MCOTG, such as active transportation funds coming through the state that the city can apply directly for, or MCOTG can apply directly for on behalf of the city. And if that money comes in on time and there's an agreement with Caltrans, they'll just build it at the same time as they do everything else for Main Street, as long as there's a separate funding source for it. So that's sort of a second scenario. And we have a third scenario, which would be what's going to be the case for South Main Street where they're not planning these improvements. And that's going to take its own funding and that's going to be a combination of working with Caltrans and working with the city through a phased approach of finding lots of money over many years to make those improvements happen. But as far as this third approach for the northern portion of Main Street, there's, there's a retrofit approach, such that the city may be able to come back years later and make changes or make improvements. Or if you're also familiar with parklets, which are these little parks that fit into one or two parking spaces, and you'll see them in front of Shat's Bakery in Ukiah and lots of, lots of cities. Eureka just launched a parklet program. Those little parklets are a retrofit technology and those can go in and create gathering spaces and, you know, outdoor dining areas on Main Street, regardless of what gets built when. So I think we're going to be proceeding with these three approaches in mind and trying to figure out how to incorporate as many of the community ideas into Main Street as possible.
Or how to set up those little infrastructure points so that if you do want to do better lighting later or something like that, the electrical is there?
Exactly. And that was one of the things that they said that they wanted to work with us on is the placement, the best placement for the lighting, where to bring the electrical conduit in, and also the bolt pattern. So actually selecting pedestrian scale lighting for Main Street. And even though Caltrans probably won't be able to install that, at least you can get the bolt pattern that you need for the lights that you want to have. So we've got a long list of things that they said, here are ways we can work together. We're going to continue to include them in our advisory group meetings and in the charrette process. Because at this point, it's all about how we work together moving forward. And it's going to take really tight coordination.
I have one other question.
Do you think, I'm sure you've heard from multiple sources that there is a lot of interest in this around town? And, you know, a lot of people are asking like, what's going on and what's happening? And I know that this is the first step and we only just had the, we were only just able to have the kickoff just the other day. But will there be an opportunity to do like a light press release so that people can find out about this process? I mean, I think, I'm willing to bet the newspapers will do stories on it, but I don't know if, I know that's part of what's under your purview as far as the outreach. But kind of like before the charrettes, obviously the charrette will take its own whole deal. But I'm wondering if we could do some sort of interim, this is what the plan is and this is what the general timeline is.
I think you're at least the 10th person to ask that very question. It's something that Adrienne and I have been talking about. And that there's a real need to share with the community just where we're at in the process. So that's on the burner for us to discuss that. I could imagine utilizing a press release to basically give an update similar to what we're giving tonight, just to say, hey, it's starting. Here's what, you know, what we can expect. And here's what the community involvement is going to look like in the process. We've talked about the possibility of doing an early online survey to help identify community priorities for Main Street design. The purpose of that would be to inform the designers and engineers that get hired first thing in the new year. Because there's no use in asking for community input if we don't know how we're going to utilize that in the design process.
Right.
It really, it's a really a disservice if we ask everybody for input, but don't understand how that's going to feed into the planning process. But we could get the community's help in prioritizing issues and locations and that can feed into this early part of the design process. So that's all a very early discussion, but we're thinking exactly along those lines.
Why don't you make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I have some comments before we get down to that point.
Okay.
Because we are here tonight to possibly approve the RFP, and I have some questions about that. I don't know if that would be Allison answering it or Adrian or Jim, but.
Well, we'll try to ask him and we'll see if we can find someone to answer for you.
I will do that very thing. This is on page four of the agreement, or whatever it's called, the agreement. Item 13, just a curiosity thing, there is reference to the fact that the money may or may not come to us depending on the Congress or the state legislature, you know, being able to fund it. And I'm just wondering what's the likelihood of that happening once the, the grant money is granted?
Is that in the RGA? I don't have the copy of the RFP in front.
In the FTA.
In, in the FTA slash RGA. The, the legislature has, has already approved it. That was, that was approved in the budget. And with this contract in place with the, they call it the fund transfer agreement and restricted grant agreement. So that's the FTA/RGA between the city and Caltrans. That secures the availability of those funds.
Okay, so the 170 plus thousand is in place?
Secure, correct.
Good. Next question. On page six, local match funds. We talk about local cash and in-kind match requirements can be found in Attachment 3, but we don't have Attachment 3. But I'm wondering, what can the in-kind match, what would that consist of? And this is for the grant, not for the, the actual construction, of course.
Right.
So what would the in-kind?
So that's going to be engineering time, my time, basically.
Okay, so basically, we would have that covered, it sounds like?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. On page 19, item 22, disputes. And this one caught my attention. Again, this whole thing is referring to the grant for the, the RFP. And, and I guess the process as well, right? The charrettes and the consultants. Is that what all this refers to?
Yeah. And let me give you a little bit of background that might help clarify. So the request for proposals to be distributed to consultants is really the first, I think it's 12 or 13 pages. And then Caltrans, as the grantor, required that the fund transfer agreement, restricted grant agreement, which is the prime contract between the city and Caltrans, be included as an attachment in the RFP. And so that's why you see that in there. And basically, any, any contractor that, that contracts with the city or any of the city's subcontractors for this project will be subject to the terms of that restricted grant agreement.
So in other words, if this paragraph 22 under disputes, if there is a dispute, this would refer to the, not, not, we're not talking about construction at this point. I mean, that's, that's, that's not even here. This is all about the planning process.
Correct.
So if, if there's any dispute between the contractor and I guess either Caltrans or the city, well, we'll deal with the city because the city is who they would have the contract with. The, the person doing the planning or the people doing the planning, is it correct?
A slight modification on that. After discussion, Adrian selected to have the local government commission as a subcontractor of the city, contract with the firm that gets selected under this RFP.
Okay. So, so then, so then, in case of a dispute, it says here that Caltrans is the sole arbiter. And that's.
It's their money.
Is that, it's their money. So I guess that does make it.
That's what I'd do if it was my money.
Okay. I mean, just kind of unusual. I mean, I, I get it. I understand it. But, you know, it's, it's kind of like, oh, I guess so. The, the last one.
I mean, that involves the contractor sending somebody that the dispute would arise, that he sent them a bill to be reimbursed for $100,000. And they said, no, you didn't do $100,000 worth. You did 50.
Yeah.
They said, no, I want 100. So then it would go to Caltrans. They said, no, we looked at it and 50 is there is 100. But I think that's what.
You know, I can still, I guess, argue that point, but there's, there's no point to it because it is what it is. And quite frankly, it's not our money.
Right. And the guys that bid the job should hopefully read the paragraph and know how they're going to resolve it.
And this is, this is the main contract that comes from Caltrans headquarters in Sacramento that our district folks have no say over. And it's what had to be signed for the city to get the money. So I guess it just literally is, is what it is. And thankfully, I've worked on a large number of these projects and never seen a dispute and never seen a point where Caltrans had to be the sole arbiter. So we'll just hope that this project is another one of those.
But, you know, details are, you know.
Absolutely.
But so I have one more question here. Under, on page 13, ownership of work product and rights. And again, maybe I, you know, the whole connection, you know, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around the thing here. But it said that the work product is owned by the department. First of all, who's the department?
Department of Transportation, Caltrans.
Okay, because they were called, up until that point, they, they were called, what, the agency or something else? So they changed the name in midstream. Oh, Cal, yeah, it's called Caltrans. So now they're, they're calling, they're referred to as the department. Okay. So it says that Caltrans will own all of the work product, all of the plans and everything. Again, it's their project, but it's not their street anymore. Does that mean that the city cannot possess the plans? I mean, there's something wrong with that somehow.
I, I can defer to your city attorney for some of the legal implications of that. And I can share with you that the way I've seen this work in actuality is that once the plans are complete, you're going to see the logos and the names of everybody that worked on the plan. So all the firms, plus the city, plus Caltrans. And that the RFP requests that 20 hard copies of the plan be provided to the city. And I think there's an additional number of plans that get provided to Caltrans. So it will be the city's plan in the sense that you'll have it in your possession. It can be adopted or not adopted by council. And the city can move forth with it as their plan. But Caltrans can also utilize that plan for promotional purposes or for any other purposes without asking the permission of the city. So that's how I've seen it work in reality. But again, your city attorney might be able to say more on that.
It is what it is.
Well, I guess where I was going with this, and I understand that Caltrans, it's good for them to be able to use this information for other projects. But, you know, I'm envisioning, I, I've worked in manufacturing and engineering for my whole life. So I'm envisioning that we're going to have a set of plans that will be, I guess, construction plans as well. That'll be part of the, the, oh, no, the construction plans will not be part of it, just design.
Yeah.
Because sometimes, okay, so maybe this won't apply at this level because at some point, we would like to be able to go into our files and replicate what we have on, on Main Street somewhere else. And I just want to make sure that we would have the right to do that. That, this sounds almost exclusionary, that if it's owned by Caltrans, that we couldn't use these anywhere else. But what you described doesn't sound quite like that. Do you see that? Does that make sense, Jim?
These are going to be public plans.
I think, I think it's probably, they're probably more than referring to the finished product here. They're more referring to the, the documents that the contractor develops in the, while he is creating the plan. The plans just, the plans, these 10 maps that are going to be like that, and you're going to have some description about it. But, I mean, if there was monuments that were found, there were different aspects of the right of way that were discovered, or there was, you know, the, the work product is, is not usually defined as the final product. It's all of the field notes and all of the stuff that you went through to get to your final product. And I, I think that, again, I think, I'm not too, I don't quite understand the dilemma. If you have something that's specifically designed for a piece of roadway, that's the specific size of the road, that this road is with the specific lengths of the block and how you're going to really have anything meaningful about that that you're going to take and try and use on commercial street or anything else. I don't think they're trying to do that. I think what they're really addressing is what Allison said, is that, that somewhere down the road, Caltrans goes to use those plans and this contractor says, oh, no, those are my plans. You've got to buy these plans from me. No. We paid for the plans. They belong to us.
And that makes sense because in, in the private sector, if someone is working for a company, they invent something or design something, it's actually the company, not to the individual. So, okay, in that context, I can understand that. Okay, thank you.
I just, I have a question more of a general nature, I guess. And it's, and it's, it's kind of water under the bridge, I suppose, at this point. But I'm not intending to, to go any different direction. But, but, you know, we're, we're obviously headed into a system of a design by committee. And ordinarily, if you want, that's kind of an, I just, I guess, I'm kind of curious of what your, what your feeling of originality or identity comes from a design by committee. You know, artists generally don't, don't design by committee or architects don't usually design by committee. There's a, there's a, you know, they didn't design the Vietnam Memorial by committee. They selected an individual who they thought had a great idea and said, do it, kind of thing. So I'm just, you know, I, I, I don't know that, given the, the way government runs anymore, that, you know, that you do it any other way. But it, it just seems to have a very much of a homogenizing effect on, on, on originality. And do you find that in all this process?
I see, I see where you're going with that. And I don't like doing art projects or photography with other people either. So I know, I know what you mean by that. I can speak to the charrette process and the reason for doing the participatory planning and getting that participation upfront is simply because it saves time in the long run. Because, you know, the other, the other alternative approach would be to put out this RFP for design and engineering consultants and have them come in and not talk to anybody and come up with their artistic version of what's possible. And very quietly circulate a public draft that no one really knows about. But technically, there's a 30-day circulation period. And then it goes to adoption and the council's getting ready to adopt it. And somebody catches wind and, you know, 75 people fill the council chambers and they're enraged because this is Main Street and we hadn't heard anything about this. And they, and they want to really work against the project. And so what this does is it just involves the community upfront. And so what this does is it just involves the community upfront, and so...
So you just get 60 people instead of 70?
Actually, I'll tell you, we went through this process in Leightonville in 2006.
Sure.
We had 200 people show up. That's over 10% of the entire population.
Yeah.
And what we got are people who knew a whole lot about this one intersection at the school, because they walked their kid across that corner every day, and they knew what was dangerous, and so we listened to that person and listened to what, how they thought that could be improved. And then this other person over here, who owned this building on Main Street, really thought that this crosswalk needed to be moved, and actually needed to be moved from where it was at an intersection to a mid-block crosswalk location, which is a very difficult thing to do when you're dealing with Caltrans and design exceptions and trying to move it to a mid-block crosswalk, but they made such a compelling case that they actually moved it.
Mm-hmm.
And so you get people who are the experts, not because they're the designers or because they went to school for engineering, but because they live in a place, they work in a place, they own properties in this place, and you get their ideas, and you use that as the starting point, use it as a real creative starting point, and then things get a little more serious from there when the design team starts figuring out, well, this is feasible, so let's pursue this contract and see how far we can take it, and let's get our engineers to figure out if that's really going to fit in that location, and if that works with the turning radius, et cetera. And a lot of ideas have to be just set aside as sort of cute ideas, because they're not feasible, but many ideas are, and fresh ideas can come in that way, and so I actually find that you get a less homogeneous result, because you get more of a local flavor, you get more of the local stamp on it. And I think that we'll find that in this process. I know Willetts is a very creative community.
Well, I appreciate that response, it's encouraging.
You know, about 10 years ago, the city did have a charrette for the Railroad Avenue thing, it was a three-day thing, and it was very successful, I think a good plane came out of it, but your vision sounds so much cooler. I like that tabletop thing on the street, that's a great idea.
So did I have a motion?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
I would like to move that we accept and approve of the RFP for the Main Street Corridor Enhancement Plan Project.
I'll second it.
You second. Did you have a comment, Valerie?
No.
Okay.
I was going to do the same thing.
Do we have any, excuse me, do we have any comment from the community on this? They have not voted. It tells it very much up in the air. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Stan?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Robinson?
I must pause for the mystery. Yes.
Mary Burton?
Yes. Thank you very much for coming down, and look forward to having more of these discussions as the time goes on.
Good, yes, and if you want me to attend council meetings for updates, because that's one way, I know we have a TV audience, and we could do, you know, special publication of these council meetings for updates, it's fairly easy for me to get down here for evening meetings.
Okay, good, well, we won't impose on you every month that we might be on quarterly or something like that, as events deem it worthwhile.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Okay. Adopt a resolution, our next item of business is adopt a resolution declaring completion of construction of the water supply project. Rod, you want to finalize this deal for us?
Yeah, this one's pretty self-explanatory, it's more of a, just to close out the project, we'll file a notice of completion with the county for the funding for a $500,000 grant. I stated in here, our final plan was submitted in July, and it's already been paid. Our final inspection was, I don't recall the last date, the specific date, I think it was August, or something like that. All we have remaining was the security fence, which was in progress, so the Division of Drinking Water sent their notice of completion to the finance, well, it was Prop 84 funding received, and right now, we're just trying to get permitted to...
Pump it into the system.
Pump it into the system for 25 days a year, so...
Do we have any holdbacks from any contractors that were holding money that's waiting on this deal?
Not that I'm aware of.
Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, recommended action.
Larry, maybe?
I'll second.
Make a second. Anybody want to step in on this, a roll call vote on?
Councilmember Stan?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Yep.
Mary Burton?
Yes. Final item, we do not have, I'm told, and I assume this is still correct, we do not have a closed session this evening?
That's correct.
Correct, cancel. That labor negotiation meeting did not happen, right?
Today, correct.
Or something like that?
But on that note, it is now scheduled for November 24th, and so we may need to call a special meeting either that night, this is two days before Thanksgiving, that's a Tuesday, or the following Monday.
Okay. We will let people know. So the other item for this evening is a reclassification of the associate planner to a city planner and salary adjustment from Schedule 731 to 76J to correct an inadvertent oversight in the reorganizational plan approved by the city on May 12. You want to, I don't know if we need, if people have questions about this, anyone?
I think it's a good idea to have a planner.
It's a minor adjustment.
And I just hope that we, like I mentioned, I hope that we can afford it.
And I did, I did look around at some, you know, job openings for similar and equivalent positions, and it seems right in line with that.
Anybody else have any comments?
No.
Any comments from the community on that item? Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll move. Second's a good recommendation.
Motion and a second, do we have a roll call vote on that?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yes.
Mary Burton?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that is it for the evening. Any other motion to adjourn?